All right. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will begin with board reports. Judy has schoolwork called this evening, so she's not with us, so Jim, we will start with you.
Okay. Dr. Walker was a host of a little field visit we had at Leonardtown High School last week to look at the new turf field. I haven't seen a new turf field in a number and number of years, so I was very impressed with the design and the new technology of the system. Also, I attended the Youth Art Month Open House at the Forest School the other day, and Mrs. Washington was there as well, and I was very impressed with the quality of the artwork, the renderings of kids that were middle school age and elementary, I believe. And I was very impressed with the presentation.
Well, I have been very busy over this last week, but one thing I've been very busy doing is getting St. Clement's Island ready for Maryland Day, so make sure you visit it on Friday for some celebrations, and I know that the people from the board will be there, so that's it.
Let's see. My activities for the past two weeks have consisted of sitting on baseball or softball fields, so my unfortunately duty calls as a parent, so I've not made it to a lot of the events that everyone else has. I have to thank Dr. Smith for lending his support for the Chopticon McDonough softball game on Tuesday, so it was a beautiful afternoon, so thank you for that and good luck. I mean, I think the first contest happened this week on our new turf field.
Yes, they did.
So lacrosse has already started.
Yeah.
So I think Monday was the first one. I believe Leonardtown might have even notched a win.
Yeah.
If I do believe I read that correctly, so congratulations, and make sure you stretch appropriately before stepping on that turf.
It's fast.
So it is very quick, so. All right, Mrs. Washington, off to you.
Okay. There are so many wonderful things happening in our school system, it is just almost impossible to just narrow it down to one, but we do that for the sake of time because we know people have other things to do. I attended Benjamin Van Affleck Elementary School, and they had banana split breakfast. The students made their own banana splits, healthy banana splits, and they were made with granola, yogurt, banana, and cream, and the students really enjoyed that activity. So I went up, and they gave me an apron, and I handed out the bags with all the ingredients, and they made them in the classroom, and I went to some of the classrooms, and the students, their bowls were empty. And I want to thank Food and Nutrition Services for being so active in educating the students about healthy eating choices, that we can eat things like banana splits, and they can be healthy banana splits, that's the key. So not only do they feed our students, they teach our students as well, and I am so proud of Food and Nutrition Services, Megan Doran, who's the director, the nutritionist, and everybody that made that a fun event. So the whole school was involved, and if they didn't want to make banana splits, they had another healthy choice that they could do, so kudos to Food and Nutrition Services.
I, along with Mrs. Washington and Dr. Smith, attended the induction ceremony for the National Honor Society at Great Mills High School. This year, they inducted 50 new students, and from the students who were sitting in the audience who were already part of the National Honor Society, the society now has to be about 100 strong.
Yeah.
I mean, there was significant presence there, and the National Honor Society is at all three of our high schools, do good works throughout the community, in particular, thanks to Mrs. Washington for recording all of this. They provided over 1,500 hours of community service from Great Mills High School, donated 1,100 pounds of food to the local food bank, and then used proceeds from fundraisers that they did in order to donate money to not only the local food bank, but also to the Sleep and Heavenly Peace Organization, as well as the National Breast Cancer Foundation. And so congratulations to all of the students who worked so hard at Great Mills High School in order to qualify to join the National Honor Society.
Those are really, that was a lovely night. That was a lovely night. Yeah, there's been a whole bunch of stuff going on. I said I wasn't going to do this anymore, but we'll do one. There you go. COVID cases, we continue to find ourselves driving down toward Flatline, I think we've only had one or two cases so far this entire week now. Of course, we know that Omicron 1B, I guess, is, so we're going to, you know, although this won't be part of the presentation moving forward, please know that we continue to coordinate and work with and track all of that information. Once again, if you aren't following us on Twitter, boy, are you missing out. There's a corner picture there with Mrs. Ryan, our Teacher of the Year from last year, going up to MSDE with all the other teachers of the year from all the other counties, and with the new state superintendent. There are all of the wonderful things that went on last week with food and nutrition and the great crunch, the youth art presentation and exhibition at the tech center, it was, the Forest Center, it was really great because you started, you could go up there, and there was Hunter Thompson leading the jazz band, playing outdoors, what a beautiful, what an incredibly beautiful night. There's a great picture there of St. Patrick's Day and our own leprechaun of sorts, Principal Dr. Hybel, who can actually jump up and tap his feet together, he's very good at it. We've got a press release coming out from last week's Smeco Math Challenge that was held virtually, so that should be published probably later today or tomorrow morning, and I just signed it. Went out to a couple of classes, got to see some great kids and teachers all working together. It's, again, it's good, there's a lot of things going on. We did have the Slack group get together last, oh my gosh, Dr. Mar, just last week, right? Yeah, just last Wednesday, and if Judy was here, she'd be talking about the fact that it was all based on communication and collaboration. Specifically, we were targeting student behavior and restorative practices, really talking about, we had a great presentation from Mrs. Long and several of the school psychologists and PPWs who were working with, specifically with kids, it was great, and they finished with talking about transition and supports for students. So at our last, last meeting, we hit them up to ask them, we have rising freshmen, you were in eighth grade, in eighth grade, what should you know as you rise into your freshman year, and a lot of the information that they gave us helped us fine tune the presentation for Rising Freshmen Orientation Nights, and they all had, each school had their students present to the kids as well, very funny, and now we're talking about when we get to the end of the year, what do we need to tell all the kids at the end of your ninth grade year, what do you need to know as you get ready for 10th, 10th to 11th, 11th to 12th, 12th to the wider world. It was really, it was a great day, great kids. Theater productions, last weekend, the play that goes wrong, what the Rose Players at Leonardtown High School, what, it's just, it's very, very, very funny, and an exceptionally technical bit of stagecraft was used. At the end of it, the play concludes, it's already, so if you missed it, the play concludes with basically all of the set kind of collapsing on itself around people. It was fantastic, so to all involved, what a great night, nights and matinee. Chopticon is coming up in April, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, SpongeBob the Musical. Let's all make sure that we are finding one of those days, and we're going to go see SpongeBob the Musical. I think it's going to be a great deal of fun, and our last theater production at the high school level is going to be Great Mills High School with The Little Mermaid in May. So we have, there's, you know, pencil these in on your calendar, you've got lots of time. So as we said, we're going to shift away from everything coronavirus and COVID and all that other stuff, instead, we're going to move into Blueprint for Maryland's Future. We don't have a whole bunch of stuff to share with you today as far as new things that have happened, other than to say we still have the five focus areas, there's information, there's a lot of resources, if you go to our homepage, please access it, from our homepage is a lot of information, but as we were talking through, we need to get more information out, we want to try to package it up in a way that people will consume it, and we think that it's time for a video. And so we, the Office of Strategic Planning and Operations, where we have Dr. Mar and the incredible group, Mary Ann Williams, they have crafted a fantastic video, and we all had our parts and our scripts, and they trundled us back and forth, and so here it is, a video.
For the last two years, the Kerwood Commission and the Blueprint for Maryland's Future has been a topic of discussion for legislators, the media, communities, and schools, but what does it really mean for our students, schools, families, and teachers? In 2020, the Maryland General Assembly passed legislation that ushered in a new era of educational reform. The blueprint was designed to help guide our education system with equity for our students, enhance early childhood education, standards for rigorous career and technology education, competitive salaries for teachers, as well as standardized accountability for our school systems. The blueprint legislation was designed to enhance the state and local investment in Maryland public schools. It contains recommendations which provide for expanded pre-kindergarten options, enhanced college and career pathways for students, resources to support student success, expanded career pathways for teachers and administrators, and transparent governance and accountability. The academic, social, and emotional needs of our students are at the center of our work. With this in mind, the blueprint recognizes the needs for additional services and directs funding and services for special education, English language learners, and struggling students who are not on track for reading proficiency by third grade. It will provide academic, social, and health support in areas that we need the most.
We know that for successful students, learning starts early, and with expanded pre-kindergarten options for four-year-olds, our students have the opportunity to begin kindergarten ready to learn. The families connected to the Judy Center of Early Learning Hubs and Infant and Toddler Program will continue to be supported through expanded opportunities.
The blueprint is not only designed for early learners, but also making sure our secondary students are college and career ready upon graduation.
The blueprint provides a focus on college and career readiness and highlights the pathways students take at high school as they prepare for their lives beyond high school. To this end, students will be assessed by Grade 10 in the areas of mathematics and reading, and are then able to follow instructional pathways specific to their needs and interests, earn college credits, or pursue a rigorous technical education. In addition, each school system is required to have a monitoring system in place to ensure students stay on track to graduate on time, prepare to move on to college or employment in high-demand fields.
The COVID-19 pandemic affected learners in different ways, and we know to ensure that our students are on track for graduation, supports must be in place along the way. This includes social and emotional supports, as well as interventions.
One of the key elements of the blueprint is to ensure equity and access, support, and opportunity. This means new supports for schools serving high concentrations of students living in poverty with before and after school, and summer academic programs, student access to needed health and social services, and increased support for English learners and special education students. Additionally, we work closely with academic partners to ensure their services are available for students to meet the needs beyond what is provided during the school day. For example, through a strong partnership with the St. Mary's County Health Department, school-based health centers were established at two schools, Margaret Grant and Spring Ridge Middle Schools, to bring clinical health services to our students and families in the northern and southern areas of our county.
As we focus on the success of our learners in our classrooms, we also look to further develop the teachers who lead their instruction. Maryland's blueprint prioritizes the need to elevate the teaching profession, ensuring our classrooms are staffed with the most highly qualified, effective, and diverse teachers.
By raising teachers' salaries to compete with other professions that have similar qualifications and including a performance-based career ladder, we will attract teachers from all over the country and encourage people to make teaching their career. In addition, teachers are encouraged to pursue national board certification to enhance their craft and their salaries even more. Further, the blueprint recognizes that to prepare for high-quality instruction, teachers need time to work with their colleagues and plan engaging lessons. To that end, the blueprint lays out a plan to ensure planning time is allotted for teachers to meet the needs of all of their students, and as instructional leaders of their schools, administrators will be encouraged to further immerse themselves in their learner's journey by teaching classes as part of their duties.
These reform efforts cannot be done without the resources and funding to pay for the programs. Maryland has laid out an ambitious plan and has reallocated funding to move us forward with these initiatives. And of course, with great funding comes great accountability. The blueprint for Maryland's future ties the funding to the implementation of the required elements in the legislation.
State and local school systems will be held accountable for upholding the implementation of the blueprint. At the state level, an accountability and implementation board is appointed to review plans by the Maryland State Department of Education and local school systems. This board is an independent committee assigned to evaluate how the blueprint is implemented, and they may withhold funding if the state or a local school system does not follow through on elements in the plan. To help provide support and evaluation of school and system improvement, the state is deploying expert review teams made up of educators from across the state to visit schools, ensuring quality implementation, looking for opportunities, as well as best practices.
We have so many things in place in our schools and across our system that put us in position for implementing the blueprint. This starts with our staff and students and extends to our broader community of stakeholders. These stakeholders are part of the process as we engage with them in planning and developing our implementation plan. This collaborative process takes time, and we are so grateful for our school system community who has come together for this valuable work.
In St. Mary's County Public Schools, we are so proud of the work that you do on behalf of our students every day. Our pathways prepare students for college and the world of work, and it starts in our early childhood programs. For so many initiatives in the blueprint, we're already immersed in the work, and we look forward to the funding to further it.
In St. Mary's County Public Schools, we remain committed to providing the highest quality education to our students and support to our families and staff. As the blueprint is refined, we will continue to inform you of changes that will impact you and your students. For more information about the blueprint, please visit our website at www.smcps.org/blueprint.
So, but, oop.
Let's watch it again.
There you go. There you go. So, about a seven-minute video, we're going to push it out on every Twitter, Insta, Face, Gram stuff that we possibly can. We've got, you know, again, drawing them back to the resources that we've already created, that was, some of the suggestions were that we need to make sure that we're getting this information out to everybody, and so we are going to do everything in our power to get that information out to everybody. So, here we find ourselves in March, look at how close we are to the end of this month. We only have really two days left, Thursday and Friday, and so ends the third marking period, so 75% of the year is done, we had SAT during the day at all of our high schools, as far as I can tell, that, well, I didn't hear that it didn't, so there we go. So we'll be looking forward to, and Friday is an early release day so that professional responsibilities and teachers can start working on all of their end-of-the-marking-period assessment information. Then we will go into April, and Dr. Montgomery thought we only had to go one week before we had spring break, but, oh no, we still have two solid weeks in April, starting with the one that ends on Friday, the first, April Fool's Day, and then the eighth. Then we have spring break, and spring break is a solid week plus Monday, and that will then conclude pretty much the month of April as we roll through it. So we are getting closer and closer and closer, we are starting the fourth marking period next week, there is a lot of work ahead of us, there is a lot of work behind us, and there are great people every single day out in school, so if you haven't found your way to one of these awesome events, be they an induction, a baseball game, a softball game, a lacrosse game, a play, a concert, please do it, it will remind us why this is such a fantastic place to live and work and raise kids. Thank you.
I just have one more kudo.
Sure.
The SATs, just offering them in the schools during the day is a game changer for so many people, you know, as everyone is still struggling to try and find SAT seats on a Saturday, you know, and it's, you know, it really is great for our kids, so I'm very happy that we are committed to continue to do that.
Makes it available to students who might otherwise not be able to do so.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Folding it into the fabric of their regular day.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Yep. All righty, kids.
Okay. Let's see. We do not have any recognitions, we don't have a public hearing, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's great. Consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes for March 9th, 2022, personnel, teacher, and personnel administrative and supervisory appointments.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and let's see, we have one action item tonight, which is bullying, harassment, and intimidation policy, JFDG, the second reading, it's like reading the I chart.
Right.
Ms. Long, Mr. Dowdson.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. I'm BJ Dowdson, System Principal of Great Mills High School, and this is.
Thanks, Cheryl Long.
And we are presenting the Bullying, Harassment, and Intimidation Policy Recommendations, and this is the second reading. So the Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation Committee was facilitated by myself and Cheryl Long. We had 15 members, a school administrator, district administrators, teachers, students, parents, ESMICs, MASA, and community representations. We met January 18th, January 18th, January 26th, and February 2nd to review the, we reviewed the current SMCPs policy, as well as the model, the Maryland state model of policy, and the regulations.
So the policy came before you for the first reading on February 9th, and then it was posted for a public hearing at the March 9th meeting, and there were no public comments. So as we go through the policy, it will look very similar to what you, exactly the same as what you saw during the first reading, there were no further changes. And just a reminder, the color coding, the deletions from our current policy are in purple with a strike through, and then additions are in red, and as we haven't had any changes since that first reading, you will see no other further colors coded. So, I went one too far. The purpose of the policy is stated there, that was taken directly from the Maryland model policy, that's why you see that in red. The policy statement, it is, it reads just as it has in our current policy, with the exception of the language targeted students for victims, which was in the Maryland model policy. And a continuation of the policy statement with the same change, and we continue through the policy statement with no further changes there. And then one other excerpt we took from the model policy that you see reflected there with the liability statement. And then the definitions, Mr. Dowdson?
And there are the current, there were the current definitions there that were replaced with the definitions from the Maryland model policy, and there's the policy for bullying, definition of bullying, definition of cyberbullying, the electronic communication definition was currently there that we left, and we just updated that and removed. And here's the definitions for harassment and intimidation, again, directly from the Maryland Model Policy.
And then Section 4, as we see in all of our St. Mary's County Public Schools policy. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve policy JFDG as presented.
Any questions, Jim?
Only question I have is not policy, but if, just hypothetically, if you, you encounter a student that consistently bullies and other, other students, what recourse do you have in terms of trying to correct his, his or her behavior?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, in our, in our schools, we have the counselors that work with students, and we have social workers in most of our schools as well that work with students on those behaviors.
And do you find that, that you have success with counseling?
It, it does. When I think about the bullying reports that come in, yes. I mean, I don't see a lot of repeaters. We work with the families, of course, too, the parents. It's very important for the parents to, to work together with the school staff on that and, you know, and really working with the student to identify the behavior that they're exhibiting and understanding, you know, how it affects other, the other person in working through that.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear. You don't see the repeaters.
Right.
That's good. That's Alia.
No questions, thank you.
I, I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I think everything is, is fine, and it is clearly following what, you know, what was laid out in, in the, in the law. Under the cyberbullying, I just, once again, as we go forward with implementation of it, when we put together the, I guess, the communications out to the parents and the students, this is, you know, cyberbullying takes place 24/7. So, I think we just need to make sure that we make clear what the consequences are if it does take place outside of school, because that's always kind of been the, you know, it's always kind of been the guideline, well, you know, with bullying, does it take place in school or out of school? But the way I'm reading this, it would, the intent would be that it would also be outside as well. So, that, I think, is just going to have to be framed very clearly to the parents and the students.
Sure.
So.
As we look at, right, because outside of school, but then, of course, then sometimes it comes into the school and then causes disruption.
Right.
So then that's where we.
Right.
Take the next steps. Thank you. So.
No questions, thank you.
I think it, it follows the, the Maryland Model Policy, which is what they've set out through, through the State Board, that you followed it to the letter truly. The additional information that was within that Model Policy really belongs in regulation, and I'm sure that that's where it will be found moving forward. So, I know that this was, to make these changes is a requirement from the State Board of Education, and we are doing so at their direction, as all state, all boards across the state are in the process of doing. So, that's all.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve policy JFDG revisions as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and we have one informational item. Ms. McCourt, we have a budget update.
Good evening. Good evening. So, we just wanted to bring out an update of where we stand with the budget, both on the expenditure side and where potential sources of revenues are to assist us in offsetting some of our delta that we're seeing. So, as you're aware, our unrestricted budget, as presented, was $254.8 million, which represented a $17.3 million increase. A net of the fluctuation of the changes of the grant funds coming over to the restricted, to the unrestricted fund, there was a net increase of $14.4 million. We submitted to the county commissioners three ECCs, or Essential Cost Change Priorities. Priority one was fully funded by the county commissioners, and that was to support our COLA and STEP increases, plus the offsetting Social Security increase totaling $5.2 and $5.3 million. ECC number two was to support our bus contractors, our bus drivers, and our bus attendants. That totaled $1.7 million, of which the county commissioners supported $800,000. That left us with an unrestricted fund delta of $917,000. ECC number three was to go to support our nonrecurring costs, supporting technology of $2.2 million, textbooks of $2 million, and our other post-employment benefits of $2 million, totaling $6.2 million in nonrecurring costs. None of that has been supported to date. Instead, the county commissioners said that we should be going back and evaluating our savings in the current year's budget, as we've done in the past, to see if there was anything that we could do internally to assist in offsetting that. So, with regard to our recurring budget, starting with that $917,000 delta, we need to unfortunately add to that additional cost that we're recognizing in next year's budget that weren't part of your original proposed budget. The first item is $1.3 million increase in our pension that the Department of Legislative Services has shared with us on March 7th. Additionally, as we've all recognized, there's been an increase in fuel costs. So, looking at our transportation budget for next year, we originally budgeted $3.75 per gallon for our diesel fuel costs. If we project that out based on $4.50, which has been our most recent experience, that would be an additional cost increase to next year's budget of $480,000. So, overall, we're looking at net increase or change, rather, of $2.6 million that we need to either find areas within our budget to scrub out and reduce, or find offsetting revenues. With regard to their nonrecurring budget, looking at the $6.2 million, we went back and looked at this year's budget, and we do feel as though we can recognize $3 million in savings by the end of the year. However, I need to mention two caveats, and that is, we certainly are recognizing fuel spikes. We are closely monitoring our transportation budget. At this point, we will be exceeding that category's budget by a couple hundred thousand dollars. We believe that we can absorb that within savings with other categories. And of course, as we've been mentioning at most recent board meetings, there is special education on public school costs that we've been monitoring. With those two caveats, we do feel as though we will have sufficient funds to cover those areas, but we are looking at this point approximately a $3 million budgetary savings. But that.
So, before we move off that, $3 million sounds like a great deal of money, and it is. But our operational budget this year is 230 million dollars.
240, 237 million dollars.
So, we're talking about less than 1.6% at the end of the year left over. So, we're at a nine, we're at, our budget is hitting in at about 98% of the anticipated cost of the anticipated revenues getting to the end of the year, and thank you. Thank you for everybody over in Fiscal Services and your guidance over all of them to be that close on a budget, that good. And I know Ms. McCourt hates having to have categorical transfers at the end of the year. We want, we'd like to end clean, but there's really no way around it. So, we are going to have to move money from categories to make sure that we, we can cover everything at the end of the year. This leaves us exceptionally tight. We will, we will not be moving into next year with any, any undesignated fund balance whatsoever. Every penny that is in, that's set aside is set aside, starting with the health insurance call and then going down through all the other categories. This is a, this is a really, this is a really tight budget. We are deeply appreciative that the commissioners started right off the whole budget process by saying, we're going to make sure that you have a fully funded negotiated agreement, and then going so far as we're going to fund half of their request for transportation. But that still, when we add the pensions getting handed on to us, the, the escalating costs for energy and fuel that everybody is fielding, we're still going back into our budget and trying to scrub out $2.6 million, which, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. The nonrecurring, we have the, you know, we can, we can work with, we can work with those perhaps, but everybody, we all got very excited, and we're like, well, the budget is done. The budget is never, ever done, and we are still going through and pinching pennies throughout. And I know that, you know, Ms. McCourt and Dr. Walker and Dr. Montgomery, as the three people that are overseeing the large, the divisional parts of the, of the budget, you know, that's, that's tough. We scrubbed out all the extra positions. There are no extra things in this budget. And I only bring this up because there seems to be a community sense of largess this year where asked and answered, asked and provided, within the school system, we're still, we're squeaky tight. So, so, before we turn around and perhaps ask local sources to assist with where we find ourselves right now, we said, let's make sure that we exhaust all other options for revenue, and let's specifically make sure that we are really gathering together forces to talk to the Maryland State Department of Education, as well as the legislature, as well as the governor's office, because the state is doing really, really well this year. And the funding formulas that, that we're driving behind the Blueprint really weren't adjusted to reflect the, the reality of the pandemic and what we see with, with numbers in enrollment and PPA and things like that.
I would also say they weren't really set up for, other than perhaps the big five counties.
Yes.
And I don't think that really resonated with the legislature, but I have hope that their eyes are opening.
I hope so. So, this slide is where they ended last week on March 15th, our commissioners, our county commissioners. As they were going through the anticipated forecast revenues and the, and the expenses as they were working through, they were, they had a $3 million excess in anticipated revenue and in almost $9 million of undesigned additional fund balance. They had a longer session yesterday, and I believe at the conclusion of yesterday, going as they did their final balancing out before they go to the, the public forum for the budget, they have.
They had approximately $858,000 remaining of revenues in excess of expenditures.
Yes.
That have been unallocated, that goes into their public hearing reserve for additional appeals and requests. So, they went from $3 million last week to $858,000 remaining as of Tuesday for their revenues. And then as far as their available fund balance, it went from $8.8 million last week to $3.8 million as of yesterday.
And that is in their, that is in the undesigned additional funds that they're carrying that, you know, they're not, they're not set aside, they're not held as part of the 15% that they hold aside for bond rating. This is undesigned, money that has no designated purpose. So, this is where we are as a county, but let's take a look at where we are as a state.
So, on the state side, we thought it would be really important to ensure that everybody was aware that there is a legislative supplemental appropriation request that has been submitted by PZAM and MAB on behalf of all of the school districts, specifically in the areas of compensatory education and the teachers' retirement costs. As Dr. Smith mentioned, the Blueprint bill, the published numbers put out by the Department of Legislative Services was substantially higher than what has actually come to fruition. And as we've previously discussed, that's predominantly as a base, as a result of the FARMs count. The FARMs applications declined significantly as a result of the U.S. Department of Baccalaureate Hospital providing for free meals to all students. So, the 2021 FARMs count, and we presented both the statewide numbers as well as the state numbers, as well as the St. Mary's County numbers, because we, we needed to make sure, as we do locally, that the state could afford the cost on behalf of all of the school systems. So, statewide, the compensatory education funding that came forward in the governor's budget was $1.2 billion. For St. Mary's County, it was $16.4 million. With this modified supplemental request, which is based on the highest, the highest from 2019, 2020, or 2021 FARMs count, the statewide number for compensatory education would be $1.4 billion, or for St. Mary's would be $20.3 million, because our highest number was right before the pandemic, and that was in October of 2019. Using that highest number, it's actually embedded already in the Blueprint formula for the maintenance of effort. So, we're just asking that they use that same calculation for the compensatory education. So, that increase in the funding for the state would be $134.2 million, and for St. Mary's, it would be $3.9 million. With regard to the teachers' retirement costs, there was a $76.5 million increase across the state going into the budget for next year, and for St. Mary's County, $1.3 million. So, the total supplemental legislative request for appropriation is $210 million for the state to support all of the LEAs, or the equivalent of $5.2 million for St. Mary's County. And the question becomes, well, how do they fund it? Well, in the most current fiscal year, the Maryland Bureau of Revenue Estimates met on March 10th and recognized already a $2.3 billion excess of revenues as compared to what they originally adopted in this year's budget. So, we feel as though this was a very reasonable request to set forth before the governor for consideration. 50% of our budget does come from the state, and it's very appropriate for us to look back to the state for support.
So, we're not quite there. We can't put the budget to bed. We want to make sure that we're exhausting all the possible ways that we would bring revenue in. You know, we collaborated across the entire state to get this, to get the request for the supplemental appropriation represented by the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and the Public School Superintendent's Association of Maryland. We hope, we hope it finds, we hope it finds traction. We really, we really do. And if it does, it solves our budget issues. If it doesn't find traction, and the state says, well, you know, we've got $2.3 billion, so $2,300 million, and we're just, nah, we're not sure what we're going to do with it, then we will have to go over and have a conversation with our, our commissioners, as well as going back through the budget and scrubbing out a little over $2 million worth of recurring costs. But before we went over to the commissioners, we wanted to make sure that everybody understands we are first petitioning the state, because ultimately, that's where, that's, that's where our challenge is coming from. Had we not had the pandemic, or had they held harmless all the way back to the 1920 numbers, we would be pretty much done and ready to have this budget locked up and, and be good to go. We'd just be showing up to the public forum and saying, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I just want to, again, thank Mrs. McCourt for presenting the information about the issues with compensatory aid to the MAB Legislative Committee, and I know that those numbers have been utilized and really opened the eyes of a lot of board members that did not perhaps have as fine a, an understanding of what was leading to the issues we were all facing, and so, you know, it was very much appreciated there.
All right, well, there you go.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, so, let's see. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 6th, executive session at 8:00, still prior to spring break.
Yes, it is.
So, one more.
Still prior to spring break.
And with that, we are adjourned.
All right. Well, there you go.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. So, let's see. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, April 6th, executive session at 8:00, still prior to spring break.
Yes, it is.
So, we have one more.
Still prior to spring break.
And with that, we are adjourned.